All right, so with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council.
We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order on January twenty second, twenty twenty four. This is a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Crescent City. We are going to have our closed session at the end of our open session meeting tonight. So would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Shalom.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Right here.
Mayor Protem Altman.
Here.
Mayor Enscore.
Here. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready and begin. I gladly believe that issued by the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have a general public commentary to any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters on the agenda are accepted. No equivalent. The council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff or appropriate action which may be include may include being placed on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed towards the entire council and any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record and limit your public comment to three minutes. You'll also be given additional three minutes on each agenda item before any action is taken by the council. Any public comment tonight in the room? Mr. Weir, I don't have Zoom open. Is there any hands raised on Zoom?
We do have one hand raised and that's from Robert Drago.
Oh, okay. Here. Thank you. Yes, Robert.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to, I can't find the agendas for the tri-agency meetings and I've written the city, I've written the county, I've written the harbor and I don't believe they're being publicly posted. I wrote one person who seems to be in the know that's written about it for the paper and they actually said that they just get it because they get it from the harbor master. So I did write the harbor master. But that's not your guys' end, but the county's committee list, none of the contacts are up to date. And so I was wondering if the city would take on, you know, when there is a tri-agency meeting posting it on their city website. Because right now, I'm not sure that there's a clear area where we can find that the tri-agency's agendas.
Okay, Robert, yes, we'll, we'll, we'll look into that and see if we can add that to our regular calendar so that when the link is available for the agenda. I do believe just for, for your information, the tri-agency meeting that was scheduled for next Thursday is actually going to be moved to the first Monday in February because of some scheduling. So there, there probably won't be an agenda posted right away, but we'll make sure that we, we take a look at that. Appreciate you giving us the heads up.
I appreciate. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised online. Then we'll close our general public comment period. And we have two items on consent, the amendment to the Jacobs contract for wastewater treatment plant along with amendment number six, and then the rainy collector variable frequency drive replacement along with resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four. I'm going to pull item number two because we have a correction that needs to be made on the on the resolution that was in our packet. Anything, any, any public comment on consent? Counsel, any, any comments on, or on item number one?
I would move to approve amendment number zero six to the agreement for operations, maintenance and management services for the Luscarasheen plant for the city of Crescent City, California with operation management international Jacob.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull a vote?
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Altman.
Yes.
Mayor Enscore.
Yes. On the rainy collector item, the, the resolution has the wrong number under revenue. The, the correct number on the actual resolution, the packet says twenty seven, one, six, seven. The correct number is thirty two thousand, one hundred and sixty seven dollars. Everything else, the staff, the number is correct in the staff report. Everything else in the staff report remains the same. It's simply a correction of the, the number under revenue increase that was in our packet. Any questions, counsel? Okay, then if somebody would like to make a motion that we approve this with the noted correction of the revenue increase, please.
A quick question.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
The quotation for replacement of the VFD, there's twenty seven, one, six, seven. So is that different?
So there is the replacement of the BFD itself under the materials side of things, and then there's also the installation of it. And so with this, so it would, so this would be the total amount. There's still some of these costs that are yet to be determined, and so there's some estimates in there, but with this, it'll give us the budgeted expenses we'll need hopefully to, to replace this. And then the revenue side of it will just be less or deductible. So from a net standpoint, the whatever the city expends will be a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars less.
So any other adjustments or if it goes beyond that, you'll bring it back to us?
We would have to bring it back. We do, talking to Director Jaeger, we do think that it will come in with, within this.
Okay. Any other questions, Eamon? All right, then I'm looking for a motion to approve this with the, the, the change in the revenue line.
Mayor, I know that we have proven adopt resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Crescent City amending the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget of the city of Crescent City with the amendment the, under the line for revenue increase slash decrease thirty two thousand, one hundred and sixty, seventy dollars. Thirty two thousand, one hundred and sixty, seven.
Just, just for clarification, just to make sure without going back, the printed copy I have here is resolution twenty twenty four zero five. Is it zero five or is it zero four? Okay, so that, that's another change from the, from the packet. The pack, my packet says resolution twenty twenty four, zero four.
Oh, you know what? I apologize. No, it is zero four.
So this.
That'll be wrong.
So we'll, we'll change this tomorrow. Okay, so what, what Councilmember Greenow said is, is correct. And the paper copy that we have for me to sign, we'll, we'll refund.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. I have a, a motion. Did I get a second? It's like a big second from Councilmember Wright. All right. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom.
Yes.
Councilmember Wright.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Altman.
Yes.
Mayor Enscore.
Yes, very good. All right, that takes care of our items on consent. Moving on under continuing business. Item number three is the Dinaca partnership agreed.
Thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. We have our economic and recreation director, Ashley Taylor, here to present this. We, this was talked about at a previous council meeting and the direction wants to bring it back with a little bit more information. And so Director Taylor has worked with the Dinaca executive director, Stephanie Tour, who is also with us tonight and can hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mayor is helpful. And so I'm here tonight with the partnership, partnership agreement with Dinaca. This is a continuation of the conversation that we had on December eighteenth. So as you recall, when we were here on the eighteenth, a budget was requested for us to enter into this partnership and help sponsor three concerts in the park for the coming summer. One of those concerts would take place during the Forest Moon Festival. And we, as a city, already have some budget to put towards that in terms of the trash and the portable restrooms. And then Dinaca would be responsible for some of those fees and the city would be taking care of about four thousand dollars of that, which would be booking fees, technical services, marketing, and then helping with the children of the automobile programs. In addition to that, we're also requesting budget for this next fiscal year. So that would be for three concerts because it would include two for this summer, which would be July, August, and then one during the Labor Day bash. And then we would also be looking at the concert for Forest Moon next summer. So for three concerts during one fiscal year, that'd be twelve thousand dollars. We did kind of rework the agreement so that it would be a not to exceed amount, which means that the city would be responsible for up to four thousand dollars and then any remaining fee would be the responsibility of Dinaca. We also discussed prior to this meeting a couple of things in regards to restaurants and trash pickup. So although it's not included in the budget request, one thing that we did want to make note of is that if the city does enter into this agreement that we would want to supply those things for the concerts. So it wouldn't necessarily be in this agreement. It would be part of the economic development budget to have the trash and portable restroom budget for each of these events. So that would be in addition to the four thousand dollars, which would come up to about one thousand dollars per event. So if it's three concerts, it would be additional three thousand for the year. So that being said, if there are any additional questions, we also have Stephanie Latour here who can answer any questions that council may have.
Counsel, questions?
As anyone, you know, today, but it was late in the day. The staff report seems to differ from the contract.
So there was one minor discrepancy, which was in regards to lodging. So we are going to strike that in the agreement that we actually have the city manager sign. Lodging will be the responsibility of Dinaca.
So cost of travel and lodging will be from Dinaca?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then I had just wanted to know if there was any additional outreach done to the community about this that we discussed at the last meeting?
Um, no, we have not had any other communications with the community in terms of offering concerts.
Is there a reason for that?
No, just, I, I think if we get, I think it would be more appropriate to approach the community if, once we're going into budget season. So at the moment, we're entering a contract with Dinaca saying that we live responsible for these fees if we do these concerts. The only thing that we do need to decide on in terms of budget for this year is the, the four thousand dollars for the Forest Moon Festival. So I think that if you like more outreach, we could do that. I think it would be appropriate for us to move forward with something that we've already determined as a priority for the city, offering the Forest Moon Festival and offering activities that day. But we will be bringing back the budget for next year, which includes additional budget for these concerts going forward. So while we are entering into this contract, if there are changes that need to be made, that can always happen. If we decide we do not want to move forward with concerts further into the summer, that's up to council.
I'm sorry, I thought you were asking tonight for us to also authorize putting the twelve thousand into the budget.
Tonight, we're, we're asking to venture into the partnership agreement. So if the city manager will sign that agreement, the budget for the four thousand dollars, I do believe we discussed at the last council meeting, we would not be including the twelve thousand dollars for next year until this coming budget season. So when we have our budget discussions in May, that will be a council consideration at that time.
Any other questions?
I, I just don't know if, if we're going to sign this contract, the twelve thousand is in the contract.
Yeah.
So I would say that we would not exceed those expenses going into next summer, but this is something that if we decided we didn't want a budget for those expenses, this is also in a agreement that can be terminated upon written agreement. So if that's something we don't want to do next summer, that is at the determination of council. So this is to allow us to move forward with the do, want to do a concert for Forest Moon. I think we talked about that last meeting. So we need to have this agreement to move forward. And then this would also be in place if we decided to have that budget.
I feel like you're saying two different things. I thought you just said we were not deciding on the twelve thousand and we're only authorizing four thousand and then you've been the twelve thousand in the contract.
So the twelve thousand is in the contract because it's a not to exceed. So if we do move forward with the, with the concerts this coming fiscal year, that would be the not to exceed amount that we would commit to. But the budget itself would not be agreed upon until, until we're in budget meetings in May.
Sir, are we able to sign a contract before we've authorized the budget?
So there would be, so I, I, I think it's a good discussion that we're having and it's good to, to bet it all out. The, the one, so from what Director Taylor is saying, so this would be an MOU saying that yes, we would be committing to this twelve thousand dollars. Could we walk that back at some point? It might be a little bit tough, especially given the fact that, that Stephanie is going to need to reach out to these, to these acts and the, the bands playing, right? And then you start to have some of these commitments. So we really would, would like the council to at least commit to the summer ones, I would think, for eight thousand dollars so that some of that outreach and we can actually get that commitment. The four thousand dollars all the way into, to next year, I mean, that, that could be under discussion after we have the, the Forest Moon, but, but I think for the most part, this this is committing to twelve thousand dollars in total with Dinaca, which would be the Forest Moon this year for four thousand and then eight thousand for the other summer series.
So do we need to ask Linda if we can do that? Is right there.
Certainly, 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 certainly can. It would be a commitment that we would then be signing an agreement and then we would take that back as part of our budget. It is what would happen. So the, the money wouldn't be in, again, there, there wouldn't be a budget that has it, but the commitment would be there already. Somewhere now, we have other agreements that, that go into, to next year's fiscal years and then that's just part of the budget that has already been committed to.
Director Taylor, I just have one question for you and then I have a couple of questions for Stephanie. Do you anticipate that this twelve thousand dollars is going to be in addition to whatever your budget was this year? Or is this, is, so is this going to be new, new item in your, in your budget, not, not taking away from something that, that it's already in the economic slash recreation budget?
Correct. It would be an ambition. It would be a budget entry.
Okay.
Which we don't really have the authorization to increase a budget that hasn't taken place yet.
This would be the commitment to doing that now.
Contract, that's the.
Yeah, oh yeah, this would be a commitment to do that, right? And then if you wanted to try to decrease the overall economic development budget to make up for this commitment, you could, but that would be sacrificing something else that would typically be in there, which I think goes to Mayor Enscore's question as to, is this an increase?
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, this to me, that'll make sense, but giving her a commitment if the council is going to move forward, this, this way needs to happen so she can plan. But I feel like going backwards.
Yeah, and I apologize. It is, I think, a little confusing with it being ahead of the budget. That makes it, I think, challenging to have, you know, forecasting discussion, but.
Uh, we, we did have our budget, get budget to actual report in our last meeting. And I think it showed around two hundred and some thousand that we, we had to get, get to allocate. So we do have some, we will run if that's what the council is worried about. At least that was my understanding from the report.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it really isn't a matter of whether or not we have the money to do it because it clearly could simply authorize a, a one-time expense right now as a placeholder to, to pay for this. The odd piece about this is it happens in two fiscal years and that, so, but, you know, I, that, anyway. Stephanie, can I, can I ask you a couple of questions? You might come in up? Because I think the question that was just made, I think that Councilor Song said about planning, from, from your perspective, when will you start beyond Forest Moon? Because that's the first, but if we have three, three other concerts, when will you start planning and looking for the people now? Okay.
Yes, we do. Summer, summer is quite a busy time for musicians. A lot of them tour in specific routings, up and down the coast. And so to kind of get ahead of whatever other bookings they might have so that we have a priority date with them, then they'll build the rest of their route around us instead of trying to slot us in for a lot of holiday things.
So, and, and Mr. Weir had said something about the, the summer, so the two versus the next year's Forest Moon. My follow-up would be the sooner we have a commitment to do even next year's, I, I would assume the, the better choices that are going to be available because I'm assuming some of these acts book out full years in advance, right?
It depends on the act, but yes, definitely a year in advance is not unusual.
Okay. Which is why I think we need to make a commitment tonight, but that's how we figure out to do that. The other question that I had was on marketing. I mean, the staff report, it, it lists marketing as fifty dollars. Fifty dollars is nothing. In mar, in marketing money, that, that's nothing. I, I mean, that's, that's not even a radio ad. So I, I mean, I mean, fifty dollars for an entire concert, I, I mean, we don't want to tell somebody one time that this is happening. I mean, we.
But Dinaca gets in-kind advertising with like coastal media.
So is the fifty dollars compensation for you producing the material that's going to?
It's for, it's for flyers and that sort of marketing, but then also there's a number of either free or very inexpensive ways to market that we usually.
Okay, I, I just don't want to under-market. This, this is something that's brand new, right? We want it to be successful. And I would rather, I would rather spend a little bit more money and get it right the first time. So we build momentum from the get-go than to go back and go, wow, we should have, we should have spent a hundred dollars. Or whatever it is. So I, I'm.
Hundred percent increase.
You guys know what I mean. It, it, this is an important thing. If this is going to be a community, community thing that's going to, we're going to set, set precedent and we're going to try to build that this is going to be the future of Beechmont Park and something we want to do. We don't want to, we don't, certainly don't want to under-market.
Right. And I, and, and I can appreciate that. And I think part of when it has to do with the Forest Moon Festival, that the concert park gets folded into the marketing for the festival and then also utilizing other things like the city's website and Facebook presence, social media presence, as well as ours and our other partners to help get the word out, as well as the newspaper with the press releases and arts notes and posters and things.
Okay, well, I, I would just, and this is for, for you, Director Taylor, I would just encourage you in working with, with Stephanie and planning beyond Forest Moon where you have these one-off concerts that aren't attached to something else. If in fact, in, in, in working together, you, you think we need to, we need to look at this from a budgetary standpoint and we need to add some marketing, we need to roll in our marketer, Lynette Ray, for the other things that she's already doing. Please just come back to us with, with, with that because I want us to get this right the first time.
Maybe it could be included in the chamber marketing.
Sure. Chamber would be a great opportunity to do that.
And also I believe that that middle concert that we're looking at would be held probably on the first Friday. So it's totally good with their marketing and their program as well.
Okay. Good, thank you. I just didn't want to, I don't want to underdo it. So that's a very helpful, appreciated. Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
James was gonna ask, will the city have any advance notice of who the artists possibilities are?
As in if I, who I'm contacting and seeing if they're available or when they get booked?
I just know that we had previous conversations about making sure that these are, especially when they're not tied into Forest Moon Festival, that they're really like high-energy, fun, you know, that are going to draw a crowd.
Okay. And so are you saying that you would like information on the acts of her approval or disapproval?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just, I was just asking, I didn't know if there was any kind of prospects.
There can be, whatever you mean. That's fine. I mean, I can send you a list of the folks that, that we're considering and that we're talking to. And if anybody maybe stands out to this is really not a good fit, you can, can we not hate that?
Yeah, that'd be great. If you could just work with us on that and then we can try to provide some feedback, that would be, yeah, be good.
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
Okay.
It's a little different, council meeting, but it's an interconnect problem. But anyway, we obviously with Forest Moon, we have a theme and I don't know if these tie-ins for the other concerts can also have a theme. But I think it would be important in terms of being an act that would appropriate that theme. So if we come up with themes, so first Friday is a tie-in, but if we come up with, you know, circuit people, whatever, you know, they have the beach department or something like that that have, you know, if we can put together themes for these tie-in events, we'll let you be one of those. So we can maybe get an act that's representative. The cynical blues you show with the happy, you know, I mean.
Right. As long as, as long as you're happy with.
Time for me to blues band for a city to be, you know, certain.
Right. Sure. As long as we knew kind of now what those themes might be and then an eye out for that step.
But I think that one, because that one is maybe.
Ties are.
That'd be cool. I'd love that.
Okay, so again, thank you, Stephanie. That was helpful to me and I do, I, I appreciate the, the interactions on, on theme type of things. I think that, that when you have a, if, if we can come up with some general theme that it doesn't, you know, not that we have to have a, you know, a Beach Boys cover band for summer, but if we have something like that, it does make it easier, especially from the chamber standpoint with it being a fairly, fairly easy lift to, to promote and, and get people engaged with it. So I think those are some, some good ideas for you to work on and come back with some ideas with Director Taylor and, and if you, if you, if you want input or Director Taylor wants input from, from us. She knows where to find us. All right, any other comments or questions? So Director Lever, just so that we make this as, as simple as possible, it feels to me like we should make a twelve thousand dollar commitment to, a sixteen thousand dollar commitment tonight. Right? Four thousand for Forest Moon. That's this year in this year's budget and additional. There's three more.
Three total. Right? One in this fiscal year and then three in next. And Forest Moon will also take place next fiscal year.
Yes. So it's four. It's increasing this year's budget by four thousand dollars, right? We have that. And then we're making a commitment to twelve thousand dollars for three more concerts. It includes next year's Forest Moon so that they, that work can start now. That's, I just want to make sure that, that, that we're, however we do that, if that's a placeholder in the, in the, the budget. I mean, we put placeholders from the standpoint of, of protocol, when we have our budget workshops, we give staff direction of the things that we want in the budget. We do that in May and then we vote on it. If, if, if collectively we make a decision tonight to direct staff that this will be in the budget, we'll be no different than if we were sitting here in May, making the, the same thing because staff would not have any authorization to take it out of the budget. Unless we chose to take it out of the budget, then we can explain ourselves to staff.
So if I can make enough, the way that this is written is only for three concerts, one in this fiscal year and two in the summer. Yeah. That's twelve thousand total. That's four thousand dollars a concert.
However, as Mayor Enscore indicated and Stephanie kind of confirmed, if we did want to start working on Forest Moon for next year, you could make it a total of four, increasing this to sixteen thousand. It'd be sixteen though.
But the contract is incorrect.
The contract need to be modified to sixteen and four concerts.
Yeah, I was going, thank you. I was going by what it said on page two, the staff agreement. It says staff would then include twelve thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty twenty four for the remaining two concerts in twenty four and the recurring concert for the festival for Forest Moon. Staff report indicated that we were, that the goal was.
Twelve, twelve next year.
For next year.
Yep.
And that we're approving the four of this. But you're right, that that's not what the agreement says. But we can clean all that up right now if we're in agreement. But you're right, that that's not what the agreement says, but we can clean all that up right now if we're in agreement. Sure, any public comment?
No hands are raised.
All right.
Got any public comment?
Doing his authorizing city manager.
To, to sign this MOU, right? We've got to make the budget agreement, remember, right?
Yeah, good question. Is four thousand going to be enough for next May? I mean. Not this one, but the next one is like going to be enough, I mean.
May twenty twenty-five, uh, if we do that is.
In my fiscal ball, I say maybe.
Well, we'll have some time to adjust.
And that might be something that I was looking a little bit closer, we've been, um, getting maybe, if we get anybody. Plus, if we get anybody contracted now for whatever amount that might be, that'll stick next year for their contract. So, um, uh, that might not be. That might not make them happy, but it'll happen and we'll stick to it.
Good.
Okay, so. I think what I'm authorizing, making a motion authorize the city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with Denaka. To approve four thousand dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for the Forest.
We already did that, didn't we? Did we, did we do that?
As far as the budget, what was discussed at the December meeting is that if council chooses to move forward with this. The four thousand dollars for this year will be presented in our mid-year budget request, which is the first meeting in March. But you'll be giving us direction to include that. And then the next years will be included in next year's budget as well as that side.
We're not really doing budget tonight.
So.
It's in agreement.
Authorizing city managers to enter into a partnership agreement with, with Denaka. For four thousand dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget for the Forest Moon Festival.
Good.
In addition to it is the intent of the council to have you rework an MOU. That also includes three additional concerts in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. At twelve thousand dollars.
And authorize city manager to sign that MOU.
But the, with the other changes that Director Taylor pointed out.
I'm, I'm assuming that was a motion.
Yes, and just clear, Stephanie, you're, you're fine with that piece, right? The housing and the lodging piece?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll make sure.
Okay.
Okay, um, any public comment? All right, are you, you feel like you're clear, Mr. Weir, City Park, you think you have what we are intent? All right, very good. Could you? Can I pull a vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Sean?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lawman?
Yes.
Here in Spott.
Yes. All right, thank you. Alrighty, uh. The USDA or the EDA, uh, grant application for the. Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy or SEDs. Downtown Master Plan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. So more, uh, economic development related items. And this is one that we've, uh, discussed, uh, a little bit, but there's opportunities in front of us. So the current SEDs or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the county, so. Uh, not just the city, but the county of Delmore, the city of Crescent City, the Harbor District. We also had stakeholders with our tribal partners last time. Uh, ran, run, runs from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four. So December of this year, that will end. Uh, it's through, it was funded last time through the EDA. Uh, the city actually acquired the grant. We facilitated, uh, a lot of the work and then the partnering agencies, the county and the harbor. Uh, all contributed with staff time to, to meet the match requirement. At that point in time, the match requirement was actually fifty percent. And so it was, uh, it was a, a little bit more substantial than it is this time. Because our population has actually declined over the last couple of years. We're now eligible for only twenty percent as far as a match goes. So that is decreased. It's estimated this countywide SEDs would be about fifty thousand dollars. So that would be a forty thousand dollar grant and a ten thousand dollar, uh, in-kind staff match. That could come from, uh, any of the partnering agencies. So what this, uh, document would be is it would be an update to that set. So our SEDs is going to run out or expire in twenty twenty, December twenty twenty-four. This would take us for that next five-year period. It's important as a region that we have this document because it makes us eligible for EDA grants. Past EDA grants include, uh, the grant that was, uh, utilized to rebuild the RV park in two thousand fifteen. And so these documents are, are very important when it comes towards, towards strategic planning as well as future grant opportunities. So that's that piece. We've talked to the, uh, talked to the county and also had some outreach with the harbor. We believe that we have their, uh, their partnership on this again to move forward as far as the city taking the lead and them, uh, being partners on it. And then we'll also be reaching out to our tribal partners as well to see if they want to be actual, the partnering agencies with it or stakeholders. In the past, they have actually completed their own SED documents. Uh, so we will, we will see how that goes if approved by the council director to take forward. So that is one piece of it. Uh, our, uh, our economic development and, uh. And Grants Coordinator Bridget Lacy is with us, uh, here tonight. She's done a great job researching a lot of this. Uh, she's been in contact with, uh, EDA on this. And there's another piece that we've been talking about, which is the Crescent City Downtown and the Downtown Specific Plan. Uh, EDA has said they'd like to see these two, uh, come together at, uh, one grant. And they very much feel that, uh, we should pursue a downtown specific plan. Downtown specific plans are pretty in-depth. So this would be for the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. It would include a community-based vision, or at least it could include. You know, we, that we can kind of draft this based on, uh, on what we need for our community, but a lot of them do include these factors. So community-based vision, uh, looking at the existing conditions, data analysis, land use designation, zoning districts, public spaces. Uh, sustainability, design guidelines, concept drawings of the downtown, what it can look like, that vision, uh, funding tools, and then an implementation plan. Uh, if you Google downtown specific plans, you will find most communities do have that. So you have your general plan and then you, when you're looking at a specific area, and it, and it really is time for us as a community. If you look at especially our zoning. It, it doesn't line up in where it's very intuitive towards the actual development that we're looking to see in our downtown. So this would be the type of tool that we can use to pair with the regional SEDs. You have this downtown specific, so, specific plan. You'd think that as a, yeah, as a, as an engineer, I'd be able to, but to get that one, but always trips me up. Um, uh, and then it also goes with our EdSAP itself, which has those, uh, those economic development recipes. Uh, that one is again a twenty percent match, so this one would be forty thousand dollars. We would not have our regional partners with this. We're estimating at a minimum, we would be able to contribute somewhere around ten thousand dollars of just staff time and us working with a consultant. Uh, leaving thirty thousand dollars, uh, for the city to match out of the, out of the economic development, uh. Uh, fund itself. And so we, the council did budget thirty thousand dollars for economic development. It is currently unspent, could go towards this. So we're anticipating that we will have existing budget to do it.
Talking about the thirty thousand was earmarked for try agency.
No, no, so we have, we have tri-agency, uh, contribution, which, uh, which that is, uh, moving forward. And in fact, we did receive, uh, an invoice from Tri-Agency, so that money will go towards Tri-Agency. This is thirty thousand dollars that we have set aside. It's actually ARPA money, I believe, uh, that we have utilized in the past. And that's what's in this year's budget for economic development. In the past, we've used it for grant applications, for Front Street, um, working with. Uh, let's see, what are some of the other expenditures? Do you remember, Linda?
Um, I think there was some that may have gone toward getting the art exhibition up and going. And there was some grant applications and there was some community outreach, I think. But there is thirty thousand dollars currently that does not have a, a specific project assigned to it from that money.
Questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
Um, looking at the schedule, submit application, award announcements. Contract, contract execution, project begins, and then the grant, the grant expires on the thirty-first. Uh, oh, twenty twenty-six, never mind which. I, I thought you said December this year.
Well, our current SEDs would expire December of this year. So even though the grant deadline for expenditure would be January of twenty twenty-six. We would want to have, or at least the SEDs portion of it done before that. So then we have an active SEDs. Having those regional priorities will lend itself towards our downtown specific priorities as well. And so our downtown might, uh, bleed into twenty twenty-five, probably will bleed into twenty twenty-five. But will be done before this January twenty twenty-six expenditure deadline.
Oh, we just have to meet, we just have to have all of our, uh, plans done by December to get it.
By, no, so we would, we would go ahead and make an application and once we have council authorization. There's not really a set deadline for it, but there is a pot of money that EDA does have. And so that's where we're anticipating the award would be. Uh, in April and then would be under contract in June. We would have about six months then at that point to complete the regional SEDs document. So that'll be done by December of twenty twenty-four. Right about the same time our other one expires.
That is the la- the last item is just, that's the last date that you could spend money.
That we.
It has to be spent by that time, but it's a final. Uh, if there was, if it didn't take all the fifty thousand dollars and there were, like, because we do a, what a two-year update on the SEDs. I mean, so that if there was, if, if there were any addendums after the initial filing was made or completion. If, if there was still money available, we could use that for any amendments to the SEDs or something like that. You got up to two years to spend all the money.
Yeah, basically, if, yeah, depending on how that, that goes, the contract amount, right, all that.
I was just curious, um, Dr. Taylor, if you've done any analysis of the SEDs and anything you would like to see the council. Um, address in the new documentation.
Um, in general, I think our set is pretty outdated. It happened before COVID. And so there are a lot of priorities that don't really reflect, I think, where you currently are in the county. So I would imagine there are quite a few things that would get updated. I don't have anything specific to, you know. Right here, but I, I think that there's going to be a lot of things that are, are already good, we need to come together to talk about. Yes, there would be a lot of changes.
Still a pretty tight schedule for governance speed if we have.
But, but yes, the, the twenty twenty-six, I'm pretty confident in the, the, the completing it by December of twenty twenty-four, bringing all the. Because the, the, the challenging part of this is on the, the regional sets, because it's not just the city. So it is pulling all those meetings together with, um, all the stakeholders in the county, the harbor, our tribal partners, making sure we have the input. And then bringing it all together for the, for the three different agencies. So that was the challenge last time. But, but important and now's the time, i- is really. And so that's where we, we do need to get that piece in place. Because it, it is directly tied to future funding opportunities for not just the city, but also the harbor and the county.
I have to say it's a great opportunity, uh. For us to, uh, to utilize a grant instead of general fund dollars. So I, I, I think that is a great opportunity. Um, are we ready for a, a little motion at this point or, or give me the?
Yeah, we, we don't have any hands raised. I, I, yeah, I, I will just, my, I, I'm supportive of, of. These, the, the reality is, is, um. At some point in time, uh, we need to start allowing these documents to, to be driving influences. On the decisions that we make. The, the reality is, 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 uh. Many of our policymakers are not familiar with the content of the existing SEDs. Or even our, our specific EdSAP. Um, and so I, as a cautionary piece, the SEDs we have to do anyway. But, but if we don't learn how to get this out of a binder and, and, and into our community. Then we're, all we're doing is, is, is rubber stamping a process. And we're not going to ever see economic development take place. And this, and, and that concern. Really hits home for me with the downtown master plan. I firmly believe we should do this. But when you look at the number of, of recipes that have been, that, that have been cooked out of our EdSAP cookbook. It is very easy to have a document and, and it not actually have, uh, real value. When it comes to developing an economic strategy. And so we, there's a lot of work involved in this beyond just collecting data. Uh, I firmly believe that, that, that the SEDs, even the one that exists, um, has a, has a strong framework. Uh, that, that, that there's plenty in there right now that would give a driving influence of our economic development. Um, unfortunately, and this was an argument that I've made at Tri-Agency, when people don't even know what the SEDs are. They don't understand the team's acronym. They don't realize the, all the work that's been done. They haven't analyzed it and said, okay, let's put this to work. Um, here we are five years later and we're, we're going to do it again. And at some point in time, we should stop just producing documents. And stop, start making the commitments for long-term development, uh, in our, in our community. It's hard work, I get it. But, so, but we need to do this. We need to learn that it's not just a revolving door of reports.
But, and.
And that's not just the city, that, that, that's, that's, so. Yeah, yeah, please.
So I, I think this is a great opportunity and it may be a great opportunity for, once this is completed. This, this may be marching words for the Tri-Agency. This may be something that goes before the Tri-Agency and they, they decide, hey, these. We're going to take this project or that, we've got it, it's set and, and we're going to focus on that.
You're exactly right.
We, we spent so much time tied up in, uh, the back group in, 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 in dealing with. The, the problems with Tri-Agency. Now, I think this can really be a springboard into getting some great solutions. To some of our, our, uh, economic development problems in our communities.
Absolutely. You're, you're spot on, Mr. Graham.
The other ask I will make of council, because you, you're exactly right. Th- this needs to be a living document. And it can't just be staff, right? It's got to be staff and the policymakers. And so if we could get two council members that would like to work on. This project with us. That would be, I think, really beneficial as we, you know, look at the priorities and then we take it. Because it's going to have to have budget allocated to it and just, you know, working on those things, I think, can be really valuable.
I'd love to.
Yeah, and I, and if, if, unless somebody else is dying to do it, I, I, I would really like to do this. Because I think that I probably have spent more time in the setting than I'd like to admit. Okay, we will, uh, do we need to agendize that or to, to establish an ad hoc or be, you?
Just if we have council consensus, then those two would be the ones working on it, then I think first.
Okay, Mr. Graham, you want to go ahead and make a motion, please?
Absolutely. Mayor, I move the, uh, the direct staff to prepare an application for the EDA funding. To update twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four Delmore County SEDs and complete the downtown master plan.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalom?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lawman?
Yes.
Mayor and Spott.
Yes, awesome. All right, have to work ahead. It's, uh. Um, number five on our agenda, Pebble, Pebble Beach, I'm, uh, my turn. Pebble Beach Drive slide, repair budget agreement. That is, it didn't sound right. I think I read all the right words, but.
That, that is a challenge, you know, actually. Uh, so yes, thank you, uh. Thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council, uh, Director Jager, talk a little bit about this and what's before you with the, uh, with the proposed budget amendment.
I, I, well, yeah, I just. Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council.
So basically, as you all know, we had a slide on the block between seven and eight. Um, just south of the, the previous slide, which I think I've learned in the history here that two thousand seventeen. Uh, we had previous line action and started doing that with Pebble Beach. Uh, ADAP was set up and then they're acting on it, but, uh, set up for, for federal funding to. Potentially repair this damage from two thousand seventeen, just in the south and one of those previous slides, the. We had a major existing slump out. Yeah, so we currently have an undercut road section.
Uh, if you tie that section, it's probably seventy feet wide. Uh, if you tie this section with the previous slide, we're looking at a hundred forty feet roadway that we would like to get repaired. So what I'm before you this evening with the floor is, and so I guess with that, uh, we have had conversations with Caltrans. Uh, they're trying to dump damage throughout the state with that. We've been told that that they are trying to mark our claim line with others and go to the feds, but they need to have. And so that provides, so basically that will not step outside the coastal commission and, and the other roadblocks to the larger project, which was to fix the city's uh, previous two thousand seventeen damage or repair that. The two thousand seventeen damage was almost like, they were going, there wasn't a point of mercy. They're treating as such, but basically we're going to put solar powered walls and rock replacement before the next slide happened, right? Didn't happen at times. So here we are today with actual an emergency, a closed road. Um, and so Caltrans, uh, funding is behind us. We think, you know, this is all subjective. We're weak too. We're having been with Caltrans this week, as well as the coastal commission this week to further this process. But in the meantime, what I'm for you with this evening is, you know, we do have some items that we have to take care of. The slide out there is still active. Um, it is still a risk to obviously traffic. It's also a risk to the public. And then we are assuming that, um, we will need some, whether it be geotactical or some engineering to get us to the next phase. What do we actually do? Somebody comes up to us tomorrow and says, what are, what are you doing? Uh, what we don't know, what we don't know is there's a bunch of dirt on some rock. They did do borings. There was actually a boring at that location, but it's in the road ten fifteen feet. We don't know where the toe of the slope of existing block is right now, you know, so there is some work. Looking ahead, if somebody said, you know, what are you gonna do tomorrow? If, if we went out there tomorrow, turned building this, we would need some engineering. Um, so the list that I provided to obtain this budget that we're asking for this evening. Uh, this is while the tiny tour is supposed to be around, uh, probably about a third of our barricades blew over this weekend. You know, we did a big job.
Can you do the big cement barricades across that people can't drive through?
The problem with that, yes and no. Uh, the problem with that is you have to tape with those. So you can't have them right at the end of the street. So that would, yes, that may be one route we go to. But you can't just abruptly do what the county did, which put a perpendicular roadway. If somebody was to hit those, you'd be liable. They need to be a ten to one to lay back some. So, yes, we can, but no, we can't. But you have to angle them. So the cars you hit, they wouldn't be head on. You'd go put concrete block across the road, close them off. Then you're liable for anybody hitting it. So.
Instead of like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so we can, but that's an expense as well. And then you still have to do the tour. So the teacher we have set up is sufficient to keep people, to keep vehicles out of there. We just need to make it more permanent. So I'm asking for about four grand to buy real, real signs, some additional barricades. Additionally, looking at, uh, because we still have people out there daily standing on the undercut asphalt. Yeah, anyway, it's an interesting, interesting discussion with the pedestrian. But regardless, uh, we need to go out there and pull that curb and pull that asphalt. Let people know, so they're not standing, cause some, at some point it's gonna go. And we just don't want anybody standing on where it happens. So I'm asking for fifty five hundred dollars, uh, rough budget to paper contractor. Uh, we do need to both the coastal and also to slow down deterioration and put some erosion control. Probably disc peel over the slope, some pan sandbags, hate mail, so they don't have any water going over that edge. And then some budget here for, uh, delivery injury costs. So I'm asking for this evening is thirty one thousand dollars to potentially the budget that we can at least have some place to spend money. In the meantime.
Where's the money from?
The money? You know, tell, I tell somebody to operate to give it to.
It, it'd be, be general fund is what it would have to be for now. We're gonna have a conversation again with Caltrans on Wednesday. Try to get an idea of what the, uh, actual emergency looks like and when we might expect some sort of reimbursement. Sounds like the, the state is at least engaging in a conversation with the amount of damage that was especially had in Humboldt. Uh, Delmore County has already declared an emergency. The next item is for us to declare emergency. So Delmore County actually declared it a few days before they needed to breach the lake. The state's lumping all this into the one disaster. So we are expecting it, that this will be hopefully eligible and there will be some money to reimburse us. If it's state only, which is most likely, that'll be at a seventy five percent uh, reimbursement rate. For now, though, this would be a hundred percent general fund, uh, trying to have the seed money to, uh, to start to address it from a pure safety standpoint. And then get the ball rolling and engineering wise to get those plans and the, the reports they need to actually get us the money.
Does Caltrans have any extra barricades and detour signs that we could use?
Um, we did let us have them. Typically, they're not, yeah, typically they're not. Discuss Caltrans maintenance.
A lot of times it's an, it, you could ask O E S for those during a disaster and they would bring them in from other parts of the state. You know, we've done it with even like sandbags or something like that. Uh, but typically it's just for that, you know, immediate emergency, you know, and then you have to give them back or replace them once your, once your emergency is over. So that's where we'd be looking for probably something a little bit more permanent at this point.
Even on the two blowouts of one on one. Caltrans went out there with the signs and barricades within weeks, they made a contractor install them. So they get their stuff back. Cause basically then you took from them in terms of detour signs and barricades would just come out of them. Counters is not own them as a general here for borrow this, they have them, they're made as yours. So anything we were to get from them, they would need to return in case they have them in this. So they don't have surplus. So when you see stuff on one on one, you know, they will set it up so there's a day or weeks, another within, within a week or so, the contractor out there.
And my last question is, um, is it, uh, feasible to, uh, talk to the Measure S Committee about funding from Measure S for this particular project like we did with the pool when we had the roof issue?
Certainly could if, uh, if that's council, uh, direction. Once we find out a little bit more, I mean, Pebble Beach is a, is a major collector road, very important for, uh, for this community and so I would think as we start to see what this funding picture really looks like, uh, that could be an option for the, for the council and Measure S Committee. Is it, in, in the end, it's most likely there'll be a local share. And whether it be seventy five percent, twenty five percent local, if we can get federal highways to also come in like, uh, previously, then, then there's a three percent match. There'll be some local match the city will need to take on in one way, shape or form or.
There's also attack, I mean, also. Uh, which is a potential to offer. Christopher Jaeger, from, just from what you have learned about what we had already done from the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Um, is the, the current active slide, is that going to dramatically change um, the project if we were doing the whole project? The whole project's a thirty three million dollar project now and it's gonna, and it's gonna be more by the time we we figure out a strategy and get coastal on board. Does what, has what happened, uh, with this storm event? Has that changed anything, do you think, from the overall scope of the, of the, the project that already existed? No, so you ask that two ways. So the easy answer is no. What we've done, I sent the guys out today to look at it specifically and do some measurements, because part of what we have a task with Caltrans is come over the budget. Well, how do you do that? Um, so there was two original theories with the previous one, it was strictly revenge, but the second one, North Spitzer version and the coastal acts is a soldier power wall type acts. So we're using the current design. So we have a current design referred by the coastal commission that is going, what we're gonna base our budget on. The other answer to that question is why I said about the day was to basically, because the original two thousand seventeen scar in the road, depression there, which, did it change over the storm? I don't know. But we basically took this current design to the upper of the north limit of, of that slide, which gets us to the lookout. And so that portion heading south, we did shorten up the south end, cause we can't justify going another hundred feet to the south. But we will, so there would be a slight, whatever happens at seven then, you know, there would be a slight deviation or have to be some sort of con flow when it came back to the rest of it. But the majority of the, so the length of the slide is seventy feet. What I'm gonna ask money for is a hundred forty feet of the wall. So that basically from the twenty feet to the south in the current slide to the northern end of that wall section, once it gets to the pop out and the bluff, then it goes strictly revenge. And so it, it, when you're back things, it's obviously in a small, but we're gonna do something that's compliant and cohesive with with, uh, the, the plan itself. We're actually using the existing plan in elevations and two tiebacks as our is our, our public one with those, we're getting cost of those. I've got Tidewater lined up to protect Drill Tech. Who obviously work with Tidewater, I work with Drill Tech and Tidewater is currently working with Drill Tech, figuring pricings on the drill is the pile of walls. And so we should be able to use those numbers based off this engineering to get an actual little budget.
What's the current plan for detour?
Well, right now it's, you know, just that one block is closed. I would think we need to look at Sixth Street itself, though, uh, rather than pulling people onto Pebble Beach and then turn them back down Seventh. You know, just have people that are going northbound, just continue on what, what used to be Taylor Street right there. So continue on Taylor past Sixth. Possibly all the way up to Ninth.
Yeah, take Taylor to Ninth. We won't close Pebble Beach at Ninth, but we'll put advanced signs and detour signs at Ninth. And then the thing we're missing now is off the detour streets for those coming down Pebble Beach, kick them over at Ninth and then kick them down Taylor's thing get back on. We have not put in a detour signs that block itself, but yeah, we tend, they planned, my plan detour was worth this to run about from Sixth up to Taylor to Ninth. And then it would still be able to, we will stop in there, we'll stop certainly in Seventh and Eighth. But there are no driveways on Pebble between Seven and Eight, so we're not adversely affecting any of the curve.
Apparently the house that is completely locked, it's canvassing with the.
Yeah, their driveway is actually on. Their driveway is eight.
Yeah, on eight.
That's got driveway as well. But I, I mean, I'm supportive of the funding request. It's interesting. Councilman Green, I brought this up at last, at, at our last local transportation commission meeting about, is there any other funding opportunities? We're gonna have to figure out something. And then we had a slide, what, four days later or something. Reality is, is at some point in time, because e- even at three percent, so at some point in time, this, the, the, the council is going to have to probably make a commitment to spend a million dollars to get this fixed. Because even it, even if, that's why I was asking whether or not it's, it's changing dramatically the scope. You know, cause that's what we're talking about, is a million dollars that it's going to take us to get this project done. And I know we don't have a million dollars laying around, but we can't afford to lose Pebble Beach either.
Yeah.
We're talking about the larger Pebble Beach project?
He's through three percent of the estimated thirty million.
Yeah.
Would be.
And it's not even the three percent match, that's the biggest problem. It's the timing of the reimbursement.
Yeah, uh, yeah, figuring out how do we, how do, how do we float a loan for a million dollars?
For thirty.
For thirty million dollars, for, for a million dollar commitment, but a thirty million dollar, uh, reimbursable line of credit or whatever, however it takes to do it. I, I, I don't know how we do that. I don't know unless unless the funding strategies dramatically change at, at federal level. I don't know what, I mean, it was one thing to, to do that with, you know, just under seven hundred thousand dollars for that, with that question mark.
Well, I'm interested also with Caltrans funding because, I mean, the state is what, thirty seven billion dollars in debt right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Two years ago, we were ninety seven billion dollars for the good.
Yeah.
Our point of order.
But I mean, it is a.
Get back to what we're doing.
All right.
We are.
What you guys are talking about state deficits.
I was talking about Caltrans.
I know, this is for emergency, public safety. It's a no-brainer. We just gotta get the cones up and get it secured so no one's falling down the the chasm and, uh, we've got the proper road blocking up, so we don't, we're not liable for people getting hurt. That's all we're doing today. So Mayor, would, would we, um, need to bring this back as a, a separate agenda, I need to talk about potentially lobbying our, uh, state our state representatives to see if there's the potential for some kind of uh, I don't know. The state has revolving, uh, state, state revolving funds or whatever at times.
I think it's a, and it's a good question.
Maybe, maybe there's an opportunity for a new program where the state has a revolving fund for smaller communities that have these kind of issues. Um, where we pay, I think we basically pay, pay them back or they, they take on the burden and then it's paid back through this, through the feds. Uh, as, as the project progresses, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to come to some kind of a solution here. Because it's, it's kind of outside our.
I, I don't know, maybe there's some, you know, I don't know what's gracious field, but I don't know that the, because this is a emergency, not a proactive emergency, but an actual physical, I don't know, in terms for this DAP twenty twenty four, the same as the DAP twenty seventeen. That would be the whole. And also it is Caltrans asking for this information, but they're the ones asking the feds for the money.
Okay.
So we're not relying on the Caltrans. Uh, it says Cal O S, but they're just, it would be Cal O S or Caltrans asking for the money from the feds. So I think that's the subtle difference. I think that's probably the longer that it happens. Is the previous Pebble Beach project was buildable, buildable and the coastal wave is a no guarantee this way. And all of a sudden went from a three and a half million dollar project to a thirty three million dollar project. I think we're looking more.
I don't like how my, is this whole going? We're just trying to get, you know, barricades, hazardous removal, erosion, engineering costs, thirty one thousand bucks. Why are we talking about all this long-term stuff that's coming, uh, you know, nineteen meetings from now? Point of order. Are we gonna do the emergency barricades? And this little list right here is all we're supposed to be, vote not. Sorry, I'm not trying to be rude, but it's kinda dragging on a while, isn't it? Well, the issue is, is this is a bigger, uh, issue than just the barricades. And, and I understand, I understand that, that we need to move this meeting on, but I think the planning is in order for this project to be successful.
Okay.
So if we have to re-agendize this and bring it back to a different, uh, different meeting, I'm okay with that as well. Mayor, I don't know.
That's, okay, can we have any public, have any, any public comment on, on this item?
I'm going to approve and adopt resolution number twenty twenty four oh five, resolution, City Council, the City of Crescent, City amending fiscal year twenty three twenty four budget, uh, from the city.
Got a motion, do I have a second? I got a motion and a second, second. I got one already.
Who has a second?
Me. Council member Wright. All right, would you please pull the vote?
Council member Greenow?
Yes.
Council member Shalom?
Yes.
Council member Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Alvin?
Yes.
Mayor and Spur?
Yes, uh, staff as, as of, as the storm things roll out and with the, the O E S, state, federal highways, it's appropriate for us to come back and discuss, um, options for, for an emergency fix, which in fact could be very different. We know that with last chance grade, we were always told from federal highways, if it fell into the ocean, we could fix it now. And the funding strategies are different under those circumstances. So please keep us in, in, informed and we will agendize it, uh, as necessary for those options.
Yep, we'll.
Appreciate it.
Like I say, we have that meeting on Wednesday with Caltrans and Coastal, also bringing our tribal partners on that. And so for the council, please plan on at least getting an update, uh, on Pebble Beach on our next meeting. If there's any action items, we'll certainly agendize it.
Thank you. All right, last thing, it was just connected is the local emergency declaration, um, and I trust everybody has seen the the resolution, this is necessary so that we can put ourselves in, in line for any potential funding, funding that comes for the emergency. Anything else that you need to say about this, Mr. Ware?
No.
All right, uh, any comments, council, on the declaration of emergency? Any public comment? All right, close public comment then, and, uh, would you please pull the vote?
No.
I got a motion, sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the operation number twenty twenty four dash zero six, a resolution of City Council and City of Crescent City, ratifying the proclamation of the Director of Emergency Services proclaiming the existence of an informal emergency.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Now you can pull the vote.
Council member Greenow?
Yes.
Council member Shalom? Council member Wright?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Alvin?
Yes.
Mayor and Spur?
Yes, very good. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Yes, very good. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Um, and we uh. We are going to be uh, going into closed session. Um, we have one item on our closed session conference with labor negotiator representative. Uh, Eric, we're one unrepresented employee with fire chief. Do we anticipate anything to report out of closed session?
No.
Okay, not anticipating anything. So we thank you, those who joined us via Zoom and for being there. And we will adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting uh, on February fifth, twenty twenty fourth, Wednesday.